It is on, okay. If you're here and you would like to sign in for a peg, that would be good. He's gonna send around a note asking you to sign in. Print in. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes that sent out.
I'll move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Kedger, anything beyond the agenda items?
Uh, nothing additional.
Okay, public speak, anybody here besides what's on the agenda item on the piece? Okay. I'm gonna move to the largest item because I promised our planner that I would do that first, the 192,500. It is the one that received the most scrutiny from our, at our meeting, and since I'm the chair of the CPA, I'll introduce it. Jamie is here and Jess is here to answer questions and to correct me, which I'm sure might be needed. This was a request from the Housing Authority, Housing Partnership, and we have, don't, Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy Kroll here from the Housing Partnership, and Jessica Allen, who, from the planner's point of view, administers these kinds of things. As you can see by the request, there were two areas which they hoped to use the funding for. One is for first-time homebuyer, and the second one is housing rehabilitation. First-time homebuyer involves a vendor. We will sub, the Planning Department, I guess, submits the CPA, or I'm sorry, an RFP for the vendor to-
For counseling.
-to be, to be the administrator for the homebuyer counseling.
For first-time homebuyer, yeah.
Yeah, first-time homebuyer counseling administration, et cetera. And that person administers, but the Planning Department oversees it.
Yes, as, they would be a subcontractor.
The housing rehabilitation program will be contracted to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Correct.
They're the administrators of that particular program.
So we oversee them as a subcontractor?
Right. In other words, these are loan programs, or both of these programs have a considerable amount of taxpayer money involved, and our planner and our finance director are overseeing in a certain way to make sure that they are done properly. Some of the details, I'm gonna let Jessica go into on the housing rehab program. There is a budget listed on the back page. It's basically they, if I'm right, they can borrow money up to a certain, why don't you tell me?
Okay, so, really the focus of this is housing rehabilitation projects outside the community development block grant target area. And I think both of you came to the last public hearing for CDBG, so if you remember, there was a map and there's a very specific area where the monies can be spent using CDBG funds. That's really targeted to where our low mod income individuals live in the city. But there's still considerable need outside that target area for housing rehabilitation. And we have a waitlist of about 50 people for housing rehab, and there's several folks on that waitlist that live outside the target area. So this money is to be used for those out-of-the-target-area housing rehab projects. And so the, the funding is to do about three homes, and in the past, when this money was appropriated through CPA for out-of-target HR programs, we were able to do four units because it depends on how much work actually needs to be done. Really, what we're doing is getting these buildings up to code, and we're making them healthy, safe, dealing with lead issues if needed. And so, so it could be three, it could end up being four depending on where the numbers play out. And the administration is held, is done by PVPC, and there's a lot of administrative work that, that is through this program. You have to qualify, you have to make sure that the homeowners are qualified as low-mod income individuals, so there's a lot of paperwork in there. And then there's a housing rehab specialist that goes out and does an inspection of the house and dresses up the scope of work of what needs to be done in the, in the project. And then they do the bidding out of PVPC's offices. They have an approved list of contractors, so they work with the homeowner. The homeowner then has an agreement with the contractor and is working directly, and PVPC sort of is the entity that, that helps the homeowner working with the contractor.
Does PVPC get the contractor, or does the homeowner get the contractor?
There's a bidding process, so it's the lowest bidder, but if the homeowner wants to select another, another contractor on that list, they have to pay the difference between what the low bid is and what the next bid is. So they have to put their own money in. The way that it's run is it's a, it's a 15-year deferred payment loan, which means that whatever the amount of money is that they need to do the rehabilitation over a 15-year period, that loan is reduced by 1/15th every year. If the homeowner decides that they're gonna sell the house before the 15 years is up, they need to pay that money back, and that money would go back into the CPA. If they stay there the full 15 years, then the loan is forgiven. And that's how the program works.
As I understand it, there's precedence for this kind of program in CPA statewide. That's important. I wanted to tell you all, in the interest of transparency, that this was voted eight to one in favor by the CPA. One member felt that the language of MGL 44B, which is the CPA Act concerning whether or not we, however, there's a line in here right after the bold section on this paper that I gave you, that Jamie provided, "However, that funds expended pursuant to this chapter shall not be used for maintenance." And he was concerned that the legality of the language, he is a lawyer, prevented us from using funds like this, and the same will be said for the Housing Authority's accommodation request for maintenance. And we felt, as Jamie explains in this email I provided to you, that the language, first of all, and all of us felt the same way, is fairly ambiguous as to whether or not this is allowed. And we felt the housing, where I highlighted, Housing Authority's reasonable accommodations request and Housing Partnership rehab program can be reasonably justified and funded under preservation and support for community housing. We felt our interpretation, which we've learned local CPA committees have a lot of autonomy in a sense in interpreting the law, and since there was precedence for this and it hasn't been challenged, but we felt very comfortable, eight of us, in approving this. And secondly, the money is not being used frivolously. We are doing something that improves affordable housing in East Hampton, so I felt fairly comfortable in voting for it, as well as eight other, seven of the members. But I wanted you to know what the minority person on it, and when we actually brought it up for a vote, he was kind of agreeing with us in a sense of that night when we voted on it, at the, at the last meeting we voted on it. So, he, he still voted no, but that's where he was. Mayor Kedger?
So, I, if you don't mind, I would just like to, I put this forward, this appropriation request forward for funding to the city council, because I have to say, in all the time I've been here, housing rehab is really, you know, one of the top, I think, one of my top favorite things. It is a win-win for everybody. And I am really excited that this is out of the target area because the lines and the lists of people that want this, and this is, this is, it prevents blight, it helps people that would not be able to do, a lot of these things are up to code, their health, their structural. So this is a funding request that I wholeheartedly support, and I hope that, you know, the council will approve it, and I see no downside to it at all.
Well, we didn't either, most of us, and also that mention of the code, one of the things I liked about it was improving these homes that are eligible to get up to code. Code is written because it's a safety issue, for the most part. So we felt pretty good about it.
And the criteria is really strict for these people to even be, you know, considered and eligible, and then, and then the list, so.
And the other question that came up with this and the housing homebuyer program is oversight, and the planner indicated in an email to all of us that this had been done before, and the Planning Department would be responsible for seeing and monitoring the subcontractor, filing financial paperwork, coordinating legal review, and other administrative duties. I think Jessica alluded to that. It's very carefully monitored. It's not like we're handing the city's money to managers outside of us without oversight. Do you have any questions on this before I go into the homebuyers program?
You said there's precedents across the state. You said this has happened before. The precedent's here, this has happened before here.
Yes.
Oh, we've done it here, yeah.
When I first started, so almost five years ago, it had already been appropriated and it was in the process.
Under steward vector.
Under steward, and it was, yeah, it was four units is what we got rounding up.
And that's also what sold, sold us on, it hasn't, it's also been happening statewide, it's not just here, so.
Jess, just because I didn't quite understand what you said. So, the, the targeting, the out, I mean, going toward an out-of-target area. Run that past me one more time.
I should've brought the map.
I mean, I remember the map.
You remember the map. So the target area is-
That's the community block grant target area.
That's the community block grant target area, and we're only allowed to spend CDBG funding within that target area.
Okay.
These houses are outside the target area. That's what we're trying to focus on, is folks that have called us and said, "We need assistance. We'd like to be put on the list." And we say, "We'll put you on the list because we may, you may be going for CPA funds to do out-of-target, but you're not actually eligible for CDBG funding because your house isn't in the right location."
Thus, the whole question of CPA funds versus CDBG funds.
Right, so the focus is to, is to-
Got it.
Yep.
Same concept, just different funding pool.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And, and we have a very longstanding relationship with PVPC. They've been running our housing rehab program for years, so we have a very, you know, they know the drill, we've got the drill down, it's-
It runs perf, it runs perfected. It's definitely perfected, and then a lot of these, as they, as they, they're paid up, the lien's a release, and they come to, you know, they come to me to sign off on, and then they're recorded. Or, once in a while, people sell a little before that, and, you know, so it, they're, I, I have never seen an issue with these in all the years we've been doing them.
Yeah, and most of the individuals that take advantage of this are elderly. They have a lot of elderly clients, people who wanna stay in their homes but just need some, a little bit of help to, to bring it up to the code that they need to be.
And it is income-eligible too, but it, it just means that they're not in that specific area, you know, for CDBG, but it still is income-related.
And do they pay back? Do they only pay if they sell it?
Only if they sell it.
She was telling you about the 15 years.
But there's no actual money changing hands, it just decrements.
If they sell it, there is. If they sell it within seven years-
But if they don't, every year it goes down a certain percentage until after 15 years.
Right.
So if they sell in year seven, do they pay eight years? Or do they pay all 15 years?
No.
No, no, they pay the, the amount of years remaining on the loan.
It depreciates every year for 15 years. After 15 years, it's gone, but if you sell it in seven years, then you pay the remaining balance that you would owe on it.
Got it.
So the first-time homebuyer program, who wants to talk about that? Do you wanna talk about that, Kathy? This is also something that was voted on, this was voted on nine to zero because the language on your thing, the bottom, Section 2, completely supports this program for CPA, so nobody had an objection to it. It's unanimous. Okay, Kathy?
The design for this program is well-known throughout the state. It's done by a number of nonprofit agencies. The one nearest to us is the Valley Community Development Corporation in Northampton. And, so we wanted to bring this program to East Hampton and into East Hampton. So the, it's a similar concept where a deferred payment loan is given to eligible first-time homebuyers to assist them with down payment and closing costs. The buyers are required to receive education about being a first-time homebuyer, and there, there's also an income eligibility criteria. It's slightly different than the other one, but it still exists. And the mortgage products, most of the banks or whatever mortgage products are offered to first-time homebuyers have a requirement that a certain amount of their, the buyer's own money goes into the down payment and closing costs. So this is like gap funding. This is funding for people who meet income guidelines and have never been able to save the amount of money that's needed to buy a home for those particular costs. They can meet the mortgage payments, but they can't get that initial piece of money. So this program, the budget proposed is that six buyers receive down payment assistance, down payment and closing cost assistance. They're required to participate in the counseling and education program that would be offered by the vendor. And there's also a line item for some lead testing, if that's a requirement, lead testing in the proposed home. And then an item for administrative costs of it for the vendor, just your basic rent which includes that kind of thing. So, so the total amount of the request for that program is $75,000. No questions?
The counseling, excuse me, the counseling and education, it says 45 participants?
Oh, yes. There are always many more people that are interested in buying a home that can, can actually buy a home. And the counseling and education program, for example, that Valley CDC runs, is an ongoing program year, year-round. Just about every month, they hold a first-time homebuyer workshop. Very often, the banks sponsor or underwrite that, so their workshops are held in the community room in the local banks. And one of the things that I like best about this council education piece is that sometimes people find out that they're really not in a good position right now to buy a home, and that's really important, that they understand that, and also understand the steps that they need to take in order to make that happen. So it's a broadly-based program and is not geared just to six people who would-
So that, so we basically fund the teachers for it, and up to 45 people can attend?
That's correct.
There was a thought that some of the lawyers and bankers involved in real estate would volunteer for this, it's in their best interest if they can get some of these homebuyers to consider. They don't do it because they want to advertise their own work, but they feel that they've had, I guess they've had success in getting volunteers, so they don't have to pay that directly.
And again, I wholeheartedly support this. Valley CDC uses our upstairs area for these classes. These classes are, to me, the knowledge that people pick up, and, and there are, I, I know personally of people that have not only benefited from the classes, but are actually able to buy their first home through this. And again, the criteria is really strict, but the education is phenomenal, and we are thrilled to let Valley CDC use our upstairs for these. And if, when you see the people coming in for these meetings on a monthly basis, it's, it's very exciting. So, again, that, you know, there's criteria, it's based on your income, but it allows people to get the down payment for their home, but not only that, to get the education to know if you can afford it.
Great program.
We asked for, this budget, I think, was developed from the Valley CDC, a budget you see here, so it has some basis and precedence. And a vendor would be contracted for this, to administer this. RFP would go out from your office once this is approved. We would find a vendor who would, who would act for it. Again, we still have oversight, we don't handwrite to them.
No. I'm a control grid.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, are you aware of our planning department? Yeah, it's all over.
No, really? I didn't think so!
All of this is overseen in the planning department, and, and the reporting of these are very cumbersome.
When you sent me this email that said that the planning department would be overseeing, I said, "Oh, that's okay, now, we're not worried."
And they're not, and, and they're not new.
Right.
They're not new. These are programs that we-
It is.
We've had in the past, we, we had, before my time, under CDBG, we, we ran a first-time homebuyer program. So we have, we know what the process is for the monitoring. Susan Peña, who's in my office, is a CDBG coordinator, she pulled out all the first-time homebuyer files, we're going back and looking at the process and how it works. So, so I have support staff who, who has managed this program in the past, and, you know, I think it'll be fine, it's not too complicated, it's just making sure all the paperwork is getting submitted and monitored, so.
And CPA committee unanimously supported this, so.
So again, my question is, was this formally under CDBG, and now we're asking for it in the CPA funds?
It's, it's a hard program to fund under CDBG because of the grant process and how the points are distributed and how the types of projects that Department of Housing and Community Development wants to see CDBG projects for. Social services is kind of, is, it's funded, but it's tough. So, and, and the last time we did it was when the economy tanked, and so it was kind, it was very hard for folks to meet that low mod criteria and find a house and be credit-worthy. So it's, you know, it's a very select group of individuals that can really qualify for this program because they still need to meet the income qualification, but they still have to be credit-worthy too. And so, so that was the last time we actually managed it, was, was during the housing crash.
Okay.
And, refresh my memory, how do they repay?
Except the five-year.
Five-year repayment?
Yes.
But it's not a deferred one?
It is, it's the same, it's a deferred payment loan for five years instead of 15.
So we are actually giving them the money after five years?
Yes, so what, what we're trying to prevent is anybody flipping, basically.
Flipping a home.
Flipping a home. That's why, that's why the DPLs are in place. You don't want somebody to take the money and then sell it next year, so.
And is the 45 divided equally among the six, or is it kind of, somebody needs five, somebody else needs nine, or is it kind of that kind of thing?
It's individual, yes.
Okay. And, last question, I think, maybe. Jamie, are, in this email, where they, where you've got Section 2 definitions down here?
Yes.
Is that relevant to the first-time homebuyer?
Yeah, so, I was, from the Master of Law's explaining what CPA money can be used for and how the committee and the planning department feel that this can be justified under, and it meets the requirements and can be funded.
Okay.
That's less ambiguous than the other, in my opinion. That's pretty straightforward.
All righty.
All right, well, since, although this is two programs, it is a single supplemental appropriation request, so I'm just gonna ask for a motion to approve the entire 192,500.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finance committee unanimous support. I might ask if, because you're so knowledgeable in this, that both of you attend a council meeting.
Sure.
It is a larger meeting, maybe we might get questions. And that's this Wednesday at 6:15. Okay, thank you.
Next one's, wait, today is Wednesday, so next one's-
A week today.
In 45 minutes. I got children to feed, I can't.
You've got a house to buy, or something.
House is bought.
House is bought.
House to move.
House to move. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we'll try to keep your taxes down over there.
Thank you, Jessica, I'll see you morning.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thanks.
The next item I wanna do is the, I wanna get the other CPA stuff out of the way, so let's try the 20,800 CPA funds improvements to Mutter Field. John, John, no, Marty.
Marty Klein.
Marty. I think you guys mixed up, 'cause I don't see you.
I hope not.
Sorry! Why don't you explain it? This was approved-
I'd be honored if you thought of it.
Nine to zero by the, it has to do, in the projects, he has a budget in the back, CPA felt it was good. We did cut the artistic sculpture they wanted, but, so we didn't just blanket everything, we did cut something in the whole, the whole, the stuff. These are pictures, I don't know if you saw them, of the rail, the trail.
Yep.
That he was gonna talk about. Go for it, Marty.
This particular request is for three things at the, at the new accessible trail that the Past Common Conservation Trust has built between East Street and East Green Street, a parcel that we own. And the three things in this request are, we wanted to build a connector between the loop trail that we have around the meadow and our existing Brickyard Brook Trail goes behind Mountain View Farm, and that trail's been in existence for over 10 years now. It's, it's our most heavily-used trail, and we thought it would be great to connect the two, even though the Brickyard Brook existing trail, the old one, is not accessible. So what we've done is, we've made probably a, I don't know, 30-foot continuation of the loop trail that goes into the woods where we have had a memorial bench and a, I guess, a rock that also commemorates people. Well, no, but that's, I'll explain that next. And so now, we have a nice sitting area and sort of a overlook over the brook there, and we're adding an accessible bench to go in there that the trust is paying out of its funds, and it's really a nice spot so that people have a chance to get out of the field and into the forest.
Is any of these representative of what you just-
No, because probably at the time I put the request in, it wasn't, it wasn't started, so.
Yeah, they're from the original request.
I'm gonna get to those next.
Okay.
So that was, that was one component. The second one is, one of the parts of the trust mission is educational, and so I'm ordering five interpretive signs from a company in Illinois that makes beautiful colored signs. They have a 10-year warranty for parks and trails, and these signs are gonna be placed at different points around the trail and are gonna explain various things to people, such as, one's gonna be about mountain, because we have a great view of the mountain from there. Another's gonna be about pollinators, what role they play in nature. Invasive plants is another one. Now, there's a couple more, I can't think offhand right now, but. And so those will be in our hands by the end of the year. They take a while because they're custom-made, and it's a couple of months.
How big are they?
How big are they? They're, let's see, 20 by 20, and the biggest one, of course, with the invasive plants, is 24 by 36, so it's-
And who installs them once they arrive?
We will, yeah.
Could you touch on, there is money also being provided by your committee, by this trust, I mean?
For the signs?
For all of us.
Oh, for, yeah, we're, we've contributed-
This isn't just CPA-funded, just so.
No, CPA is definitely-
Total matching fund, $67,000.
Right, and we, we've had, actually, more than that. We got $47,000 from Commonwealth Massachusetts DCR recreational trails program. That was our first grant, and we've had, I haven't had a recent total, but around, probably approaching $20,000 in individual donations, and we expect more will come in. And we're trying to establish a, a maintenance endowment so that we can have some money to take care of the trail all the time. And the, the third component of this request is butterfly gardens. So we hired a couple of stone workers from Ashfield, and they came in and built these, the kind of rectangular with round corners, two feet high, and we have a local woman who's a horticultural wizard who has donated the plants, and because it's been so dry, we have held off on planting them. But by the end of the month, we're gonna put soil in there, we're gonna plant them with native flowering plants that she's already purchased and has been taking care of all summer in the ground, so. We wanted to do that because the meadow there is just loaded with invasive plants, and we are gonna be rehabbing that over the next few years, bringing it back after we kill some things off, to, to what it might have looked like if all these nasty plants had gotten in there. But we wanted to give people an idea of some beautiful native flowering plants that they might have seen, but can't see right now. So, it's gonna be one more thing along the trail that will give people something to look at and experience in other sensual ways, so.
And this qualifies-
If you haven't been to the trail yet, it's getting rave reviews, and you really need to come. We're having a grand opening on October 8th.
Jess is gonna ask that.
You're all getting invitations.
That's the whole accessible trail?
Yeah.
But this isn't started yet, has it, or it hasn't started?
What's that?
This, this part of it, the accessible trail, additional funding. Have you started it and this is gonna?
Every, all the work is done now.
Oh, so this is gonna-
The only thing that we haven't done is fill up the planters and plant them, because they're built, and the signs.
So this funds pays, pays you back, or pays, I forget?
Yeah, we get reimbursed.
This is a reimbursement of funding that you've already-
Invoices to the city.
I got it.
You've already spent the money.
Yeah.
That's correct, right, too.
So we-
They spent their money.
We paid-
Yeah, but they have to submit bills to you to get this funded. It's reimbursable.
Right, so the first, the first $185,000 from CPA, when we talked-
Previous CPA funding's in April, yeah.
This one in April.
Yeah, so that-
I think we're all done with that.
Yeah, that, that's, there's some money left un-invoiced, but it's all been, they, they spend it, they submit their invoices, and we reimburse them.
Okay. Good. Any questions? This, this is, qualifies under open space and preservation, so we love that.
I, I, also?
Yes?
I just wanted to add a word, my name's Ann Holstein, and I live actually on Mutter Street.
Okay.
But I've been working on, doing some volunteer work towards getting the trail going, and I go there a lot, and- But, um, I've been, uh, working on doing some volunteer work towards getting the trail going, and I go there a lot, and just wanna say, in terms of community support, I, interestingly, over the past couple months, as it gets finished, I've seen, whenever I go, there's like a lot of parents with strollers, which is interesting to me, I mean, and, of, yes, people could go on the bike path, but this is so nice because there's, you can have bikes and rolling things on it. Toddlers can get out and run, you can do your stroller, you know, use two people together, which on the bike path, you always gotta move over and stuff. So it's re, I think, just from observation, it's getting great use and really good community support, so the fact that you're putting, um, community preservation money into it, I think will be really appreciated by everyone. And also just say, in terms, I've done some fundraising on my own, and some of our local churches have contributed because, I think, especially for the disabled, um, opportunity that's there. So, in so many ways, it's a great addition.
That's awesome.
It's awesome, it's exactly what the CPA was designed to do, and I love these kinds of projects, 'cause it's so, it's not so, it, it's not that active recreation like football, it's passive recreation, it's, it's used by a broad spectrum of people, especially now, uh, accessible. Being accessible to handicapped people is great, it's just fantastic.
The, the sort of subtitle I, I created for this project is "A Place in Nature for Everyone."
Nice.
That's a nice thing.
Nice.
And so, um, we, we built it specifically so that people who do have handicaps would be able to get out in nature in a safe environment where they wouldn't have to worry about bicycles or whatever behind them. And it's, it's actually turned out to serve a lot more than that, and the people in the surrounding neighborhoods are thrilled about it, have been using it since December. We have, we've installed a couple of picnic tables there, we have a rain shelter, it's really a beautiful place.
Are dogs allowed?
Dogs are allowed on leash, um, and if you have a plastic bag, and there was, there was a time, it was about a couple of months ago, and I was leading a tour for, um, some people, they came from Michigan, and they're touring accessible trails around the country with a handicapped son. And so I gave him a tour of the trail, and in the course of the going around it, I had to pick up six piles of dog trap.
Oh, that's terrible.
On the trail, so I took a photograph of one of those.
That might be one of your signs?
And I posted it, I put up signs, but I also posted it on Facebook with like, "Are you kidding me?"
Is there any, is there any benefit to putting in a pole with?
You know, we thought about it, I, I don't wanna, it'll take the idea of a dog park, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
And so miraculously, whether it had to do with my Facebook postings or not, I haven't had that problem, we haven't had that problem since.
Facebook does some good.
And, um, I'm in the process now of raising awareness, and I put a, a post on Facebook last week, and I think I had, geez, last time I looked, I don't know, a hundred and forty likes and twenty shares, which, you're not on Facebook, we're reaching hundreds of people that way that wouldn't have known about it otherwise.
How did this, is that how, I'm wondering how the woman, what her son found out about you, about, well, about the trail?
She actually works for the National Land Trust Organization, and there was a, I guess there was a posting on their email server or something that somebody passed along to me, and I wrote to her, and I said, "Hey, you're out this way, come on by."
That's wonderful, that's wonderful, thank you.
Oh, thank you, we're so grateful that you've supported us this way, 'cause, um, it was an expensive project, and.
Two hundred and five thousand out of.
Little volunteer organization, so.
Yeah, that's great.
This really made a, made the difference.
Just to let you know, you're no little organization. You guys are everywhere.
Well, our impact is, is, um, big, but our, you know, terms of numbers are small.
And I wanna know the names of those flowers after.
Oh, yeah, let's do.
Any more questions, councilors? I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the allocation of.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand eight hundred dollars to do more, so.
Mutterfield.
Mutterfield, what he said.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Now I find it, there it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, this Wednesday, if you wanna come, in case there's questions.
I'm gonna be out of town, Dan, do you want me to write a letter to the council?
How about John?
Uh, John's gonna be there as well as some other people from the trust.
You don't need to be here, as long as somebody from the trust is there.
Okay.
In case there's questions, but this one is pretty, uh.
I know.
I think, it's, 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 we've already approved a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's not like this is, is new, so I'm not worried about it.
No, not either.
Just if you, if you can have someone there in case.
We'll, we'll have some numbers here.
Alright.
From a small organization.
The last one, on the CPA, is the forty thousand dollars for, another accessibility request, and this had to do, well, if you remember, we put forward, um, the fire suppressions from the Housing Authority, and at the time, she mentioned she wishes she could do ramps and things, because they have been buying them, and she says, "Why not?" And as Jamie has indicated, in the same way, we felt, this isn't maintenance, this is preservation of housing and affordable housing. So I'm gonna give you a couple of pictures, these were in the mail, these are the kind of ramps they've done on their own before, Tim Kane is the maintenance supervisor there, Deb is having surgery or something, can't be here tonight. And he can, he can explain, these are, I can hand you, uh, this, and a lot of the, this is all the application stuff, and some of the, you can see some of the funding, these are, they've had to buy them in the past, so they've had to use their own funding, and this will, uh, assist them greatly. They actually only asked for thirty, we upped it to forty, so they can get a lot of the ramps done.
And where are these gonna be?
Where are they, can you?
What, what it boils down to is, if a resident that's lived there, say, a year or a month or a week, um, suddenly decides, "It's hard for me to get in and out of my, my apartment." Mass state law considers that a reasonable accommodation, if they get a doctor's notice, and they bring that reasonable accommodation to us, and we have to alleviate the barrier.
So this is anywhere, this isn't a particular housing facility?
These, it's, and it's not just ramps in general, but ramps is the biggest thing, this is.
There's also shower accessible.
Shower units, um, um, it wouldn't go so far as to like actually remodeling a, a unit for full accessibility, because that's beyond the scope, that would be beyond a reasonable accommodation, but basically, it's just the, the removal of barriers to allow the residents to live a regular life.
It, just to answer your question more clearly, it's any house that's under your authority.
Correct, um, these particular ramps, the six thousand, five thousand dollar ramps are actually Cliff View and Sunrise, which is a single-story building, um, or a single step-in building is what they call it. If we were to put one of these over flat acres, those ramps would run anywhere from fourteen to sixteen on up, because they have to travel at a certain pitch or a certain distance at time. After you get across a certain amount of distance, there has to be a rest period, so.
So you have to have a landing.
A level point, and then continue on with your mathematics as to how long the ramp has to be.
So these might, if you had to put some in over there, you'd only do three over there, it's forty thousand dollars.
That's it.
Are these removable? These that we're looking at here?
Those particular ones are removable, um, some of the ones that we've done in an, in an effort to save money, um, is brought in a concrete company and just poured a solid concrete ramp. The problem with those is, is they become a maintenance issue after that, so that's why we kinda stick to these, 'cause.
And you can remove these and move them, move them, if someone doesn't need it in the future, you can move them to another house.
We have, we have storage space that we can utilize, and nice thing is, these all break down, they're just set screws, they break down, you can set them together, you can store them up in the rafters of, of the sheds if you had.
I like these, but you have to do what you have to do. I should again tell you that, um, one of the same member felt that, uh, this was maintenance, I didn't feel it was maintenance, 'cause these are new items.
I can, I can assist you in clarifying that, actually.
Well, you don't have to, because this is about interpretation of the CPA law, and eight of the members, again, it's the same issue as it was for the rehab program, is this maintenance of affordable housing, or is this preservation of affordable housing? So it was the same, uh, person who felt that it wasn't, but we all felt that our interpretation and the precedence for doing this. Go ahead.
CPA funded, um, ramp improvements at the Housing Authority, I think it was two thousand and eight, and then again in two thousand and ten.
So this has been done before, right?
So there's wooden, there's a wooden ramp, um, going into.
The, uh, the new ramp at Cliff View's community room was paid for via.
Right.
That was fourteen.
And, and the right, and then there was also the, the, the accessible bathroom.
The bathroom at the same time. Yep, at the community room.
Yep.
So just so that the CPA has, has funded an accessibility of improvements at the Housing Authority multiple times.
And again, this has to do with accommodation, reasonable accommodation, which we felt, geez, that's important, um, for people who have to live in these homes because of their affordability and don't have the money to improve the home through ramps, et cetera, so.
And you know, you're looking at these pictures, I love the way that, I love that these are removable, but you're looking at one step, one step, and prevents you from living in your own place.
And that's sad, but.
It's very sad.
It was just like this tall, in one of these pictures.
Once you, you know, once you experience that, it's a matter of, you know, not living in your own home anymore.
So question, um, this packet that we got.
I sent her what I sent it to.
I'm trying to, would this have come from you, Tim, right?
Correct.
It came from the Housing.
I wrote up that.
One, one is for thirty thousand, but I don't see that another ten thousand.
Uh, we, that was done at, uh.
CPA, as I said, increased it to forty, it was our choice, they requested thirty, and we had said, "That's not enough." Because, as she explained, no, to be honest with you.
He's gotta be a hero.
We felt, we felt that there wasn't enough money to afford, considering some of the ramps cost fifteen thou- fifteen thousand dollars.
So this is payback, thirty thousand you've already spent, no?
No, um, this is for, this would go into a holding point.
Okay, it's for future.
And then, as we needed a, a reasonable accommodation comes up, we submit it and.
So it would be run, it would be run, the, the money would stay in an account in the city's, one of the city's accounts, um, when the Housing Authority comes to, uh, you know, me or the CPA committee or Jessica with the request, the reasonable accommodation, which is gonna cost ten thousand dollars, and these are the bids that we've received. Then we'll pay the con, we'll pay the contractor directly, or we'll reimburse the Housing Authority depending on, um, whatever we've determined at that point.
And there won't have to be a ramp, any requests to comply with the ADA?
Yeah, there was a shower install thing.
Shower install.
But it has to be a reasonable accommodation, so there needs to be.
And that's a definition, there's a definition.
It goes, it goes all the way through, they've gotta have doctor's notes, they've gotta have, um, I mean, we've done reasonable accommodations as far as even allowing a woman who has difficulty breathing, allow her to run her air conditioner in the wintertime, that's a reasonable accommodation, they just bring you a note, and we continue to pay the electric bill, that's, I mean, that's the way those are. But we would never come to you for paying your electric bill, I'm just saying.
These are for, they're physical.
Getting a bathroom or a shower.
Yeah, exactly.
This allows them to use these funds rather than their own funds to do these ramps, and the reason we did extend it, we debated it at length, was because the cost of these ramps is pretty high. He mentioned if he had to do, uh, a couple of steps over there, that's fifteen, sixteen grand.
Yeah.
I mean, you only get two of them done at, at thirty, so we felt we oughta try and give them enough funding to do at least a few at the beginning. If they're only five thousand, that's only those one-step ramps you saw pictures of, but you're looking at other housing areas where you need to do larger ramps, right? So. There wasn't a frivolous reason, it was just.
And the guidelines on these ramps are really stringent through, um, through the building inspector's office, because of the grade, they have to be, you know, obviously up to code for a certain grade for obvious reasons, and like you said, like a resting area, so.
Yeah, pretty strict.
They say what size bolts they can use to hold it down for weight distribution, always, they, you can't just put one of these up without knowing what you're doing.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Question, Dan?
No.
Take a motion?
Motion to appropriate forty thousand dollars from the, uh, from the CPA to the Housing Authority for reasonable accommodation accessibility.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Dan, is that Wednesday, too?
Yes, all of the things on our agenda are Wednesday.
Will you be able to be there, or somebody from?
Yeah, yeah, we're, depending on how fast or.
I don't expect, again, to have any issue with this, it is about accessibility and accommodation, but.
It could have somebody there.
You could have somebody there. Okay?
Alright, I think you all.
At six fifteen.
Thank you very much.
Alright, let's go to, oh, we could do the eight thousand five hundred and forty-three dollar item, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night. Want to explain?
This is just.
The fire medical expense, uh, from Chief Mutter.
So I'd be happy to explain this, this is just a typical old bill, um, invoices that come in after the fact, our fiscal year closes June thirtieth, um, we are really very progressive about calling to see if there are any invoices that are out there, so, because we cannot use fiscal seventeen money to pay fiscal sixteen expenses. But no matter how, you know, how much you reach out to any of your vendors, and you're waiting for things to come in, they still come in later on, and this was something that they thought was not going to be done, and, you know, one of the things was done the very end of June, so they thought it was gonna be done in July, which would have been next year's funds, so, that's what these are, so you cannot, we can't process these without, uh, that's exactly how we process them, as an old bill.
You need to ask us for the funding, because it has to be a supplemental, a transfer.
Right, we can't pay anything out of this year's money.
You can use reserve funds, but you can't use existing.
We can't pay anything out of this year's money with, that was last year's bill, so that's why we call, it's nicknamed an old bill, because that's what it is, so we need a transfer, um, and you'll notice.
But it's from the reserve fund, which is this year's money, I'm not, I'm not understanding that.
Okay, so we use a reserve fund as our source of revenue to fund these, so if this was, if these bills, all these, these medical bills, vehicle repairs, happened in July, we just pay them out of the fire budget.
Right.
We can't, because they happened in June. So we have to use, you know, whatever, reserve fund is what we chose to use here, um, we could use stabilization, but why would we?
But you're using funding that hasn't been previously appropriated in fiscal seventeen, if I understand this correctly.
Right.
For specific fire department expenses, in other words, you have to find either reserve fund, free cash, or stabilization to pay these bills, because they haven't been appropriated.
No.
I'm wrong.
That, that's, that's not actually the way it is, I could pay, we could pay these, it doesn't matter, we could pay them, we could pay them out of our budget, because you don't approve every single thing in the fiscal seventeen budget, we have line, if he has a vehicle, he has a vehicle repair line item in his seventeen budget.
Right.
But this isn't seventeen money, we cannot use seventeen money to pay sixteen expenses, it's last year's expense, so that's why it's called an old bill, because it is, it's not this year's bill, it's last year's bill. So we have to put the, like, we have to put the money into that, um, into that, a separate, a, you know, separate one.
So into the reserve fund, does money go that was quote-unquote leftover from twenty sixteen? Like, so the, the books close, on whatever day the books close, June thirtieth? Every dollar is accounted for, is there money that ends up in like a savings account, and then that rolls to twenty sixteen?
That's what our, that's what our, like, like free cash becomes, and, re, reserve is what we make it, that's part of our budgeted, we, we budget a reserve, but anything, as you know, anything not used in sixteen floats into free cash for seventeen, which will be happening pretty soon, you'll see free cash certification. But we cannot pay for, any invoice that we get in July or August, September, October, if that invoice, if that data service was in May or June, which is our last fiscal year, we cannot pay it out of this year's money. We have the mon, he has the money in his line items, but he can't pay it, because it's last year's, it occurred last year.
But yet we can pay it out of a reserve fund.
We, we're not, we're not paying it out of reserves, we're transferring money from the reserve fund into, which is, into these line items, which is for, to pay an old bill.
That, the explanation then is that the reserve fund can be used to be transferred into the line item.
Exactly.
Even though that reserve fund was budgeted out of FY seventeen funding, the reserve fund can be used, because it, it's not dedicated to any department, it's there in reserve, like stabilization, for these items, that's what I meant, yeah, okay, I got it.
And could, could you have used free cash, or?
We don't have free cash yet.
But if you had, you could.
Oh, yeah, if like, say, this is, say this was October, and we have our free cash certified, then we could move money from free cash to pay this, I could, we could.
So this is an accounting, really.
Exactly, I could use stabilization money to pay this, but it becomes a transfer, no matter what way you look at it, other re.
This was unbudgeted for FY seventeen, it was budgeted for FY sixteen, so to speak. It was budgeted for FY sixteen, so to speak.
It's an expense in sixteen. An expense in, a prior year's expense, whether it's sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, cannot be paid out of this year's money.
Got it.
Got it.
Okay, good. Any other questions, Chris?
No.
The same straightforward.
Yep.
I'll take a motion. Dan, you're up.
All right. Motion to, for the following provision to move eight thousand five hundred and forty-one and twenty-one cents from the reserve fund into two accounts, a thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven and eighty-six cents into fire medical expenses, six thousand seven hundred and five and thirty-five cents to fire vehicle repairs for a total of eight thousand five hundred and forty-one, forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Dan, you're up for your reserve.
We don't have a date on that yet, right, Dan?
Is this one?
Or you're gonna do them all? Okay.
I don't mess around, I don't wanna see old dates by my agenda items.
No.
Well, we haven't had any work to do for two months, so I don't think the councilors would mind getting some work.
There'll be no shortage.
Yeah, well, then there'll be holdups. But I figured these are fairly straightforward, so we could get them. Do you wanna explain the workman's comp, dear?
We had, at the time of the budget, we had received an estimate of a twenty-five percent increase in workers' comp.
Twenty-five percent? What's the reason for that? Too many people have applied for workman's comp, is that why?
Rates of, insurance rates in general have.
Gone up?
Skyrocketed.
Because it's more risk now.
Well, every year when we prepare our budgets, we ask our insurance companies, whether it's liability or workers' comp, you know, do we need to plan on an increase? Whether it's health insurance, liability, workers' comp, do we need to plan on an increase? And a lot of times, it's yes, we love it when it's, when it's flat, but in, on this particular case with workers' comp, it goes by your usage.
What's in there now, Jane? I'm sorry? What's in there now in, in the workers' comp budget? Said there's a deficit in that account.
Well, you can see what you, what's in the budget and what you need. So she, this is what she's short, is a twelve thousand seven fifty.
But is that gonna double it?
No, no.
No, it's.
It's like a hundred and sixty-seven, almost a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
So in other words, you got an invoice and you didn't have enough to pay.
Exactly, she's twelve, seven fifty short.
Okay, that's why we have a reserve fund. Okay.
So, so one sixty-eight was budgeted? Correct. And it came in at one eighty and change?
Whenever your invoices, Jane.
It came in, oh, excuse me, the one sixty, sixty-eight includes the one eleven F, so the police and fire code safety, so the budgeted for workers' comp is approximately.
Well, it's your whole bottom.
No, because that's what, that's one eleven F.
You've got that in here.
So it's one sixty-eight and the bill is one, one forty-five, sixty-seven for workers' comp and thirty-nine, nine fifty-three for one eleven F.
So it's a combination of insurance.
Correct. Public safety have their own policy.
Okay, so not, not just one policy, but it's workers' comp.
Correct.
Two policies. Okay, got you.
Okay.
Good. Any questions, Dan? Motion, who's up for a motion?
Motion to transfer from the reserve fund for a deficit in workers' compensation of twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to be transferred to workers' compensation and one eleven F fund, I said twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you.